Welcome, everyone. The Board met in executive session to discuss the employment history of a particular individual, so we are now just going to begin our regular meeting. With that said, I am pleased to announce that we've concluded our superintendent's search process as we've selected Dr. Benante, Phil Benante, as our new district leader. Dr. Benante is with us this evening, and the Board will be appointing him with a resolution tonight. He will officially start in his new position on July 1st. Dr. Benante comes to us from the Arlington School District, where he's currently serving as the deputy superintendent and has done so for the past five years. Some prior positions he's held in Arlington included principal of the Beekman Elementary School, assistant principal of the Arlington High School, and as a fifth-grade instructional leader for both the general education and special education students. We're very pleased with the site visit that we conducted about a week and a half ago, and we are very excited to have Dr. Benante join us. We once again would like to thank our friends at Putnam, North and West Chester Boces, Dr. Jim Ryan, Dr. Lynn Allen, and Mr. John McCarthy for their assistance with the search. And Dr. Ryan extends his regrets for not being able to be here this evening. But with that said, I would like to introduce you, and if you'd like to speak, come up to the mic. Great.
Cecilia promised she would get my good side, so... And I'm on, right?
You can actually take it off if that works.
It's okay. It's okay. I'll leave it there. I'd like to thank you, Ms. Hammond, and members of the Board. To say I'm excited is an understatement. I woke up at 3:00 in the morning last night, mind racing with thoughts and ideas, so excuse me if I'm a little subdued now because I'm feeling the effects of it, but I'm incredibly excited to serve as your superintendent of schools. I'd like to thank Dr. Bowers and the other administrators for your very warm welcome. I had the chance to speak with Dr. Bowers for a few minutes this afternoon or this morning, and I couldn't ask for anything more in terms of the support that you offer to extend in the coming weeks, as I know it's a significant transition for both of us. So I look forward to working with you through that. As I mentioned, I'm incredibly enthusiastic and optimistic about what's to come, both for me personally and professionally. A few things really stood out to me through the search process, as I think not only the members of the Board learned a little bit about me, but I also learned more about the Haldane community as well. The first is that it's a close-knit community, and that's very important to me as a professional, certainly as a superintendent of schools. Both my wife and I grew up in very close-knit communities, and there's a lot of great things that can come from that, which I'll allude to in a minute. The first is, and the second, excuse me, is that it's a community that prides itself on an enriching academic experience for kids and for our students, but also of equal importance is the social and the emotional experience that our kids are having within our schools. And again, just something that resonated with me. And I think, you know, what I heard through the process is what I believe is a shared value for the Haldane community at large and a personal value of mine as an educator, and that's the feeling that a community thrives when its members embrace their interdependence with a sense of compassion and a sense of empathy. And I think that's an incredible value as a community to have. As a superintendent of schools, I couldn't ask for anything more, and I think we're completely aligned in that way. And my hope would be that we're able to quickly establish a sense of synchronicity between our students, our staff, our faculty, our administration, our parents, and our Board of Education in service of our kids. There's a quote we often reference in Arlington when we're bringing teachers onboard and educators onboard, from John F. Kennedy, "To he who much is given, much is expected." You've given me an incredible opportunity. I would expect you to expect a lot of me in this, but I want you to know that I'm fully onboard and looking forward to this transition in the coming months. There's a few things you can expect from me. The first is that a letter will be going out sometime in the coming days, just a welcome letter to the community at large, that Ms. Hammond and I and Dr. Bowers will work to distribute. The second is draft entry plan, which I would hope would be shared with the community in some capacity, whether it be via the website or another mechanism, so you can get a sense of the work I'll be doing in the coming months, because the work starts now. It doesn't start on July 1, and then also from that point forward. I'm very interested in meeting with a cross-section of community members to learn more about the values inherent in the work that's going on here. I very much am seeking to listen and to understand. I realize that right now I'm the outsider coming in, but I hope to fully immerse myself in our schools and our kids' experience in our schools as time goes forward. So with that, again, I just want to extend my appreciation to the Board and to anyone who was involved in the process. It's been an incredible experience for me, and I'm looking forward to meeting you all and getting to know you better, and hopeful that you will get to know me a little bit better here in the coming weeks and months as I get ready for the transition. So, thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Okay. At this time, I'd like to open the public hearing, and if anybody would like to speak, even though you haven't signed in, you may do so. And as soon as public comment ends, we'll close the hearing and move on. Who's going to speak?
Are you looking for comments?
Yeah. Right now, that's the comment. We are opening the floor for public hearing.
Are we going through the presentation again?
We are.
Well, the three-part budget.
Three-part.
Yeah.
It's a short.
Short and sweet.
Okay.
All right. So tonight is just a recap of what we have been talking about. As you know, the Board adopted proposal number four in April, and here's our revenue recap. As you see, most of our revenue for our budget comes from our tax levy. We have some use of reserves. We have appropriated fund balance that we expect to have at the end of this year that we're going to apply to the 1819 school year. We also have some of the retirement reserve, as we have in the past years. We haven't had to use that reserve in the past, but it is a part of our revenue going forward. We have our state aid from our final budget. If you recall, this was a $55,000 increase over the governor's executive proposal. Our tuition revenue, which is primarily from Garrison students attending the high school. There are some other parentally placed, and other school districts have placed children here in the district that we collect revenue as well. And then some other miscellaneous revenues, interest income, penalties, refunds of prior year expenditures, not a whole lot, but luckily we do have some. Now, that total is $24,070,392. This dictates what our expenditure plan is going to be, because as you can see at the bottom, our spending plan cannot exceed our revenues. We need to have a balanced budget. Our spending plan details shows that the budget total is, matches our revenue. It's a 2.35% increase over the prior-year budget, and as you can see, most of that budget increase of $551,000 is covered by the tax levy increase for '96, '627. That is at the tax cap. We're not going over the tax cap, so we would just need a simple majority to pass the budget. Our projected tax rate increase, as you know, I'm always hesitant to talk about this because the assessments do not come out until August. But typically, our projected tax rate increase matches the tax levy increase. But as you can see, another disclaimer at the bottom, that the assessment and equalization rates still could impact tax rates. I don't anticipate any surprises, but just to let you know that that 2.64 is an estimate. So the state ed requirement for tonight, because the budget document is due today out to the public, is that we present the budget in three parts: the capital component, the administrative component, and the program component. This just shows you how most of the pie is, as it should, goes to the program component. The administrative expenses are the Board, the superintendent's office, the business office, and all of the items, and the principals' salaries and their offices, and plus the related employee benefits. That's just under $3 million to run the administrative component of our budget.
And in case anyone's wondering, could you explain what happens with the Board of Education money?
It's certainly not our salaries. No. Well, it does include your salary of zero.
Pointing out.
It's...
That money's from Boces.
Right. There are Boces expenditures. We have, you know, the Erie Boces is where you get the policy. Thank you. And any travel, if there's new Board members, they have to go to some training, and there's travel. It's not a lot. The Board is not, you know, having parties or going out to dinner or any of those items. It's really just administrative expenditures that we charge to the Board of Education because it's appropriate, you know, to... There's no salary included here.
Or benefits.
Or benefits. Program expenditures are the teaching and everything related for the regular school, the special education portion, transportation, interfund transfers for the summer handicapped, it's still called, the summer special ed is, I believe, what they're anticipating changing that to, and the cafeteria interfund transfer. There's $20,000 that we still transfer from the general fund to the cafeteria to try to keep that afloat. There's other income we've been trying to do in the cafeteria to get that out of the red. It's difficult because the cost to run the cafeteria is much more than what we can charge. And again, the employee benefits that are related to this section. Capital expenditures, operation and maintenance salaries, the equipment for pupil transportation, any debt service, and interfund transfers on that line is the repair reserve transfer that we budget for. And again, employee benefits allocated for this part of the budget. Our proposition number two is our vehicle proposition. It's for 130-passenger bus for $55,000 funded through a band, which is a bond anticipation note. Because we issue that band in the summer, we won't be making any payments on that until A lot of times, people ask, why do we have to buy a vehicle every year? Well, the past plan from many years ago, which really wasn't a plan at all, was wait until it wouldn't pass inspection, and then, oh, we need a bus. So now, over the years, when we have implemented this vehicle replacement plan, we get to have a new varied fleet, because we have big buses, medium buses, minivans, and a car. We can match our vehicle size with the need. There's reduced repair costs when you have newer vehicles, and then there's trade-in value when we want to trade them in. We don't just get four cents a pound. So we have a separate proposition instead of including it in the base budget, because it would negatively impact the tax levy limit calculation if we had a big purchase in the budget. And we get to purchase those with a band, which is a five-year debt note, and it keeps our budget manageable, because as debt falls off, the new debt comes on. We don't really feel the effects of that in the budget. Proposition three, reestablishing the capital reserve. We're not asking for money to establish this reserve. We're just asking for the permission to keep it going for another 10 years. It was established in 2008 for a 10-year term, and it's now expiring, and if we want to keep the ability to have our reserve fund, we need permission from the voters to do Another reminder that you're going to see a separate line on your tax bill. That's for the Butterfield Library Levy. It was passed in 2015, and the school districts collects the $73,150 and turns that over to the library every year. Today, the budget document was delivered to all the school buildings, the district office, the Butterfield Library, and it is on the school website.
Under the budget link.
Right. And there's a budget link in Google Docs, is it?
Right.
That's where it's put. And it's a very large document. There's four parts to it. This is what it looks like. Consider the budget delivered.
Thank you, Ann. Okay. Any questions, comments from the audience? Sure. You can just come up.
I'll save my congratulations to the Board and the new superintendent for later, but congratulations. Quick, on the reserves, on the use of reserves, I think this is the first time I've seen it. I may have missed something. I missed a lot. Can you talk about that a little bit more, like the $895,000 that was in there?
Oh, sure. At the end of the year, there's fund balance, and we're allowed to have 4% of our fund balance, just as non-committed to anything.
Carryover.
To carryover.
Got it.
In the years of the big budget cuts, when we had the gap elimination adjustment, we knew that we were going to have it in excess of the 4%. So we appropriated some of that available fund balance to next year's budget. We still have the luxury of having that money available. It's really a plug that as...
So it rolls every year?
It rolls every year.
Increasing or decreasing amounts, depending?
Right. We do have other reserves, like the retirement reserve. If we needed to, we can tap into that. And it's always been my goal, but in years when there's budget cuts, like it has been really for the last many years, we can't look to decrease that. But going forward, we should always be mindful that that amount one day will not be available to us.
Right.
And it'll be a hole in the revenue.
Great.
So we should always keep that in mind, which is that nobody really likes when I talk about that at the beginning of the budget and stuff, but I remind everyone. I don't let you forget it.
Thank you. Sure.
Hi. So you know me. I'm Laura O'Connell. So if you know me, then you know that I'm like more concerned about the capital kind of investments that we're going to be making. I had heard that we were going to be kind of moving forward with a larger-scale capital investment due to the fact of the deterioration of the main building. Where is that right now? Do we know?
Yes. Do you want me to speak? You can speak.
Start, and then I'll add.
So I do, we were on the Buildings and Ground Committee together, so I understand. What happened was the Board decided that to get a better understanding of the conditions of the pipes, we wanted a study conducted, and we did have that study conducted and presented probably about a month ago. And the study indicates that the pipes are not deteriorating at the rate that we thought they may have been. And so it's not necessarily a huge emergency that needs repair immediately, and in fact, may not need repair at all. John DeAngelo was going to do some additional testing. He was the architect that worked with us and get back to us. He wanted to take additional pipes, from what I remembered, some more samplings. And so that's where we're at. We're not currently moving forward with that capital reserve project, but it may be something for the future that we need to consider.
But a piece of that project that was being discussed was the renovation of the bathrooms in the elementary school.
Yes.
And that has been pushed forward. We're not putting that aside. We realize the importance of that. So that's in motion, and that is being paid for by our, and the repair reserve. So we have the funds for that in one of our reserve accounts, and, you know, we have a whole bunch of things that need to happen: state approval of the plans, to when we actually get it going. So we don't know. It might happen in a year, in six months, whatever, but it's in motion.
Got it.
So that piece of that project is still happening.
Plans are getting close to be ready to be sent to the state, so.
Okay.
Moving forward.
Thank you. Anything else? Anybody else have any questions? Okay. If not at this time, I would like to close the public hearing and move on to the superintendent report.
So we have a number of things to share with you tonight, and you will see when the budget brochure comes out and is mailed from the district to your homes, that there are a number of things that will be included in it. One is the, what's called the fiscal accountability summary, and the State Education Department gives us a report card, basically a fiscal report card every year. And what they do is they compare the amount of money that we expend per pupil with what they call similar schools or a similar district group. And we find ourselves, or the group that we're in is low-need and low-resource capacity, meaning that we have a degree of wealth, and we're not, so we're not high-needs district. And this year, for the '16-'17 accountability summary, our expenditures per pupil for general education was $12,847, and our similar schools expenditure was $14,657. So as you have seen in prior years, we still come in substantially lower than the schools in our similar schools group. For special education, our expenditure is $35,722, and our similar schools group is $39,775. So we continue to be able to provide the services for our students that we think are probably equal, if not better, and the cost per pupil is lower. So congratulations to Ann for her wizardry and doing what she does and helping us provide the kind of education we need to for our students. So we also have another accolade to give to our school district, and as we've been coming in and we've been finding ourselves on many lists and accolade lists, we have just received words from what's called background checks and that we are one of New York's top 100 school districts in New York State, and it's for a number of reasons, but a big component of this rating is for safety. And so if you go through, there are 100 districts that are all throughout the state. I think we're 80. I should have circled it. I think we're Haldane, 80, or the 85th. So we are one of the top 100 schools in New York State for a number of different measurements, and this time it is from, once again, it's background checks for New York's top school districts. So congratulations to everybody that makes that possible. Okay. We have a new doctor in the house, although she's not with us tonight, but we have to say congratulations to Mary Ann, Dr. Mary Ann Silke, who defended her dissertation last week. And so now she is finished with a very long road and a very difficult program, so welcome to Dr. Silke. So we're very proud of her.
Did you know what her dissertation was in?
Yes, and I have to remember what it was. It was a student...
It was long and so specific.
It was student-centered.
Yeah.
And the first thing I asked her is, are you happy to have your life back? She said, absolutely.
Yeah. Yeah, it's a lot of work. So I'll have to have her give you that information. I know that it was school-related, and once you hear her tell you what it's about, you understand why she chose, why she chose that. Okay. So the Haldane school calendar. You are going to get a letter probably in the next week or so that talks about some of the changes that we are making due to the number of snow days that we had this year. And we're going to take you through the, you'll have something in writing, but we'll take you through some of the things that we had to do. We also have some changes for next year's calendar that we are also going to be talking about. So for the calendar next year, you were right. So Margaret suggested we take a look, because we were going to be in session on the observance of Veterans Day, which is, was a Sunday, so the observance is Monday. And when we went to the regulations, you can hold school on Lincoln's birthday and Washington's birthday, but not on Veterans Day. So we are now going to be not in session on the 12th of November, and the superintendent's conference day that was originally scheduled for that day will now be on the 20th, but that's for next year. So that's a change that was made. So we have two changes for next year. Again, we will not be in session on the 12th of November, and the superintendent's conference day will be changed to the 20th. I also have to tell you that we are not going to send out a delineated version of next year's calendar until we also learn a little bit more about what's going on at the state. Next year, there are new requirements as far as the number of hours we're in session, and we are required to be in session for 900 hours at the elementary level and 990 hours at the middle school and high school level. In the regulations right now, it states that you have to back out lunch and recess, and in the middle and high school, it says that you need to back out the change in periods, so as students are traveling from one class to the next. Although Julie's hearing that there may be some changes with that. And I have not seen anything in writing. Right now, we know that it will go into effect, it will be voted on and go into effect on July 1st, but there's still question marks out there. And what we, in the past, what we had are specific numbers of hours you had to be in session weekly, and then there was an annual number that was required, but this is different. This is saying, we're going to give you more flexibility. You can schedule the days and the times as works best for you, and so we're just going to give you a bank of numbers you have to achieve. So there will be changes. You will get another updated calendar for next year that includes what I just shared, but we're also waiting so we don't have to keep sending calendars. So that's going to be a change.
So the 900 hours is elementary also?
900 for elementary and 990...
990 for high school.
And right now, this year, it's five hours a day for elementary and five and a half hours a day for the middle school and the high school. And so if you do your calculations, it comes to the equivalent of those hours. So...
So will that affect the two-hour delay, three-hour delay? Is that what this is responsible to?
Well, right now, if we have to include the change in periods, we're going to have to make some changes, because we will not have 990 at the secondary if we do the conglomerate of the hours. So we may not have any two-hour delays next year. And so that's also something that we're going to have to consider.
But weather-related two-hour delays?
We, well, if there's weather-related two-hour delays, you can still have those, although we did see recently that they're saying that we cannot have three-hour delays, and they suggest either a two-hour delay or a closure. So...
Right. But she's talking about next, Dr. Bowers is talking about next year.
Right. So when we're adding up those numbers, when you're adding up those numbers for the 990 hours...
Yeah. If we have to pull out the change in periods, we will not have, because you also have to pull out lunch. You have to pull out lunch, and now they're saying, you know, the four minutes between each period, if you, if you look at the combination of those, that's, you know, an extended period of time. So if we have to include those, there's going to have to be some changes that are made. And we're going to have to be looking at the number of days that we have for half-days. We can have up to, right now, we can have up to eight half-days and four superintendent's conference days. if you, if you look at the combination of those, that's, you know, an extended period of time. So if we have to include those, there's going to have to be some changes that are made. And we're going to have to be looking at the number of days that we have for half days. We can have up to, right now, we can have up to eight half days and four superintendent's conference days. So that's going to be changed as well. So there's a lot of balls up in the air right now. And until we have a very clear understanding of what the state's going to do, we really can't finalize anything. But we do know that we're going to be on vacation on the 12th of November. That we do know. So that's what we can tell you.
And for this year?
And now.
Oh, sorry. What were you going to talk about?
I'm about to go into that. So the segue with the two hour delays is a good segue because the one that we have scheduled for May, we are going to cancel. We have been out of session enough with the snow and the weather related delays that we will not have the two hour delay in May. And then we're going to have to have changes at the end of the year. So we need to be in session 180 days. Normally, even with our snow days, we're in session for 183. But this year, we went beyond that. And so we actually are, have been in session, will be in session at this point with the schedule as it is, 178. So we have to make up some additional days. The state has allowed for us to have a superintendent's conference day, the Monday, the 25th, which is after school ends. It's not a day for children. It's a day for the adults in the district. So we will be open that day for a superintendent's conference day. What will happen is we will then extend out that week. Originally, our last day of school for students was going to be that Thursday. It'll now be that Friday. Because we had, and I'm sorry, it's just a very complicated explanation that I have to give you. Because we did have 183 days after the snow days under normal circumstances, we had three days that we were in session that we did not get state aid for. So we don't have those extra three days. So we have to look at the regulations and meet all the, all the requirements of the regulations. We cannot have a half a day on the last days of school if it counts for state aid. So normally, we dismiss at 11:30 and the last day of school, 10:30. This year, we can't do that. And we have to have the full five hours of session and then back out lunch. So instead of the 11:30 dismissal time during the last week of school, it will be 1:55. And we will have Monday and Tuesday. We are full days, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. We will be dismissing the middle school at 1:15 and the elementary actually will begin the dismissal process. The actual dismissal time will be 2:05, but we'll begin the process around 1:55. So students will be home a little earlier, but they will not be home for a half a day. And we will be in session that Friday. So that will change. And we will send home information with, that explains all of that and gives you the exact dates and the times. But we do have one additional day. If you have the superintendent's conference day, the Monday after the last day of school on the 25th and your last snow day, which was ours, April 2nd, which was a give back day. So not only did we not have a give back day, but then we had a snow day. So that was kind of a double hit that day. We now have, we will have 179. If we meet all the requirements as is stipulated and we're still short days, the state education department can excuse up to five days. We will need one as for the state aid. So, and most of the districts in this region need more than one. And so that's, everybody is making sure that we're meeting all the requirements and the guidelines.
Thankfully, it looks like spring or summer is upon us.
Tomorrow, summer. Today's spring. Yesterday was winter. All right, so that's, so again, we will be sending out information. So you will see changes regarding this year's calendar. You'll see changes regarding next year's calendar. We also will include in our discussion with the state education department, the fact that one day we were required to close by the village and another day we were required to close by the county. So that's all part of it. Okay, there is, at this point, we have a PTA meeting that is planned for the Monday, the 7th, which is our Board of Trustees Meet the Candidates Night. We do have a couple of our Board of Education candidates here with us this evening. And so we invite you, again, it's Monday, the 7th, at 7 o'clock to the auditorium. And the PTA will be hosting a Meet the Candidates Night. The following Monday, at this point, we have kind of an update where, with where we are as far as our deeper learning initiatives and our inquiry based instruction and the new tech network. It is scheduled for Monday, the 14th at 7 o'clock. We plan to have students and teachers that will be sharing their journey for the last three to four years in kind of the shift in the instructional practices. Right now, I had a call from the PTA that we have three people that have responded. So if we don't have more than three people, we probably will not be here on the 14th. But if we have, if people have an interest in being part of that, we ask that you let the PTA know so we know and we can get our teachers and our students here. One of the interesting things that happened during the conversation that we were having about the new tech network and with the PTA, at the last PTA meeting, is that when, when the new tech network first came onboard for the first two years, we were having information nights and we were going out and we were really trying to train the community with the shift in instructional practices that we had, we have here. And we started to see the numbers of people that were coming to the meetings waning after we had a number of these meetings. So we just kind of moved ahead. And then we had in conversation, anybody that has moved into the region over the last two years or anybody that's new kindergarten or first grade parent really doesn't have the same background. So that was the reason and the impetus to have this meeting so we could update the people that were new to the region. And so once again, if you do have an interest to learn more about that and to hear some of our kids and our teachers talk about the shift in instructional practices, please let the PTA know so we can determine if we're going to have the meeting on the 14th or not.
You know, moving forward, would it be at all interesting to have it become, you know, part of kindergarten orientation for parents or like an onboarding process? Just to somehow, you know, like that's, that's the ground zero as they enter the school and to give them information or? I don't know if they're already overwhelmed, you know, because it's all so new anyway. And maybe they, they don't get it and they're not interested. But I'm just wondering if that's like.
But I also want to say, we also have to figure out how to get to the people that are moving into the area and are coming in with students that are in first grade through 12th grade.
Well, yeah, that's true. And then we have these people who come in for high school.
Right.
Right, as well. So maybe it's, it's, yeah, I mean, maybe it's not kindergarten orientation. Maybe it's just school orientation. You know, people who are new to the district for the year all get to come together and learn about the practices.
And Caitlin Chadwick was very helpful as one of the new people to the district. And she kind of took us through the understanding of, you know, they've been getting little bits and pieces from what the teachers are saying or for what, what we introduce. We are going to be sending out a newsletter that is going to be where we are right now in the development of the strategic plan. And that will be coming out towards probably the mid, middle of June. And that will just be like, as we have for the last two years, we've been sending out the almanacs at the end of the year. And so that will give people an understanding. If we don't have the meeting, I was, actually, I have two students, very nice young men that are coming to see me. One is Laura's son, that will be coming tomorrow. And I, I may actually ask them to write the letter. So instead of having my letter in the opening, I think it would be nice to hear from the students, like what types of things they will have. So they are, either we'll be presenting at the meeting or we may have them write the letter if they choose to do so.
So Mr. Duder tweeted, sorry, David. I have, I'm working with two students right now who gave up a study hall to be assigned more homework for no reason. And so I retweeted to Luke and said, this must be you and Noah. But it's really been a great opportunity and experience for him. And I will say that Mr. Duder has been right there alongside of them and very encouraging. They're now working on a project where they're interviewing the administrators. I think most of you have been interviewed already. And tomorrow's Dr. Bauer's turn to kind of talk about how school can be more fun. They're experiencing that right now with Mr. Duder in his Discover, Create, Innovate class. And that's all part of this NTN. And it's been a great opportunity for them, so.
Sort of quickly piggyback on that. I've already been interviewed by Luke and Noah. And it was, it was actually so much fun as they were asking the questions and video recording me. A lot of philosophical educational questions. And I told them, I can't wait to see the finished product. They also had a, a parent volunteer, actually an elementary parent, who was, who was working with him as, as kind of a mentor. So it's, it's nice to have a, a community member who's a parent here helping the students along with Mr. Duder as well. So I'm looking forward to that. Jen, in answer to your question, great idea. We obviously need to have a way to indoctrinate our parents who, who don't know about the great things that we do and find a way to get that information to them. Personally, not sure the kindergarten parent orientation is the best time. That's a night that already lasts about an hour, 15 minutes. And there's an incredible amount of information that's shared by our kindergarten teachers. And it's very, very important information. A lot of logistical information, a lot, you know, especially if it's first time parents who are very, very nervous and really want to find out about the kindergarten program and see those faces of who the teachers are. And I think if we add something important but different to that night, I think we're going to lose part of the importance that we do have for, for meeting those teachers. So I totally agree with you, but I think we just may need to find a little bit different forum.
Yeah, well, I like Dr. Bauer's idea. It might need to just be like a new parent orientation, you know, that has multiple grades and.
I think we do that in the high school. I'm not sure.
I don't know if we do the instructional piece to the degree that we probably should.
Well, and I think parent university was supposed to encompass a lot of things beyond that, right?
Yeah.
Well, when we had our first go with the parent university, you know, and obviously it was a different focus, but maybe that is, you know, a topic for next year that we can consider.
Well, I know that the principals are kind of already planning one for the fall and one for the spring. And so they're working on that. And I know that, I'm not sure what, have you decided the topics at this point? Or you're just kind of thinking?
No, we, we did start with a discussion on pro-social behaviors. Was one of the ones we were looking at for the, for November. But we really just put it on the calendar so that we're committed to dates, which means that it then happens in terms of planning and needs and a new superintendent coming in. But we were, we were thinking pro-social behaviors as being one in the fall. We're just throwing that idea out there right now and working in conjunction with the CTC and Danielle and Pac McCarthy. So it's kind of a conversation.
Sure.
So the wellness committee had our final meeting on Monday. And the topic of the, I think now defunct health fair came up. And we'd sort of discussed dovetailing that with Friends and Family University going forward. And so the idea of splitting the two out, maybe secondary, elementary and offering topics that cover both, but then topics that are perhaps salient to each group of parents that might be a more appropriate topic of discussion for the elementary and secondary. So that's sort of a ball that's up in the air right now.
The other thing is, we were talking today about, and we're not really sure where this is going yet, but as we had the health fair, maybe moving into a DCI or our discovery type of forum in lieu of that. And one of the things, it's more, that, it's turned into more of like a parent just visitation. But we also want it to be a real deep dive into what's happening throughout the district for our kids. And so we've started that conversation. We're looking, we will be having something in June. We're really talking about what that's going to look like at this point. But we think it's important, not that, we don't think it's important for the parents. We certainly want the parents and the parents will be welcome. But we do think it's important for people, the kids, to see it spiral through their years and what it looks like in fourth grade and what it looks like in seventh and what it looks like in 10th. And just so they know where it's going and they can see the changes that are happening. So that's an important piece. Okay, so Haldane Discovery Night was, or might be Discovery Day. So we'll let you know as that kind of gets underway. Voter registration is scheduled for Thursday, the 10th of May from 4:00 to 8:00 p.m. at the Elementary Middle School building. So if you.
So if someone registers, if someone registers that day, can they vote in the, in the school board election on the following, on the 15th?
Yes, that is the last day to register.
Okay. Okay, so once again, the 10th of May from 4:00 to 8:00 o'clock. If you have, if you're not registered and you want to vote, we hope that you will come in and, and register so you can vote for the budget. The annual district meeting and trustee election will be held on Tuesday, the 15th of May from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. in Room 105. 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., I guess I should say, from Room 105 in the, the Elementary Middle School building. Right at the end, you can come in. And are we having our kindergarten orientation or meet and greet that day?
We are having. We are having our kindergarten meet and greet that day. And while the children are meeting with their new teachers, I will be touring the parents around and making sure that they have the opportunity to know exactly where Room 105 is so they have their opportunity to vote as long as they're already in the building.
So they can do two things at once while they're here.
Absolutely.
Okay, so Danielle Pack McCarthy, who is, she was just hired as the Substance Abuse Prevention and Treatment Coordinator for Phillips Towne, will be coming in to join the Board of Education Workshop Meeting on the 19th of June. And so she will be sharing with us what her vision is and what she plans to do in her new position. The next Board of Education Business Meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, June 5th, 7 o'clock in the band room. And the June 19th Board of Education Workshop Meeting, once again, is, will include, at the high school, middle school library, will include recognition of our retiring faculty and staff, Mr. Schwartz, for his 11 years, for his 11 years on the Board of Education. I will be saying my fond farewell to this wonderful little place. We will also be hearing an update about the algebra curriculum from the math department. Mr. Sisana will be coming in and will be talking to us about our first kind of movement into looking at the, the way we provide Regents courses at the high school. If you remember, last year, we had Algebra II, TRIG. We used to have the Regents at the end of the course. When they changed the syllabus, we decided to stop requiring the Regents for Algebra II. And so this is its first year.
And I'm getting the book from Ms. Niffen there saying, I thought I talked about this already. And you sure did, and we did appreciate your update. By this time, the students who will have wanted to take the Regents will have taken it and we can see how it worked out for them. So.
Okay. Dr. Bauer.
Yep.
I don't know if you mentioned this. I'm just going to say it out loud because I think, I might have missed it. But so next meeting at the vote, we are convening at 8:00 p.m. for a regular meeting in the library.
For the 14th.
For the 15th, yes.
On the 15th. On the 15th. So our board meetings technically will start at 8:00 o'clock. We'll do whatever business we have to do, and then we'll sit around and twiddle our thumbs until the election results come in.
Right, and I didn't say that, so thank you. And the middle school concert will be before that.
So if anyone, yeah, so we can go to the middle school concert if we're available to do that.
And then we can start, we're starting our meeting a little late, and then we'll be hearing the results.
And we'll be in the middle school, high school library. We've usually been down here, but there's a concert, so we figured it'd be best to be upstairs.
Okay. And then when we get to new business, I'll be sharing a little bit about the potential for, of traffic flow discussion.
Great. Okay, moving on to information reports. They're there for our browsing, which will be approved next meeting, as well as the committee minutes.
The technology committee minutes. So they're from September and November. Is that because those are the only minutes or meetings we have been given? Are those the only meetings that have happened?
There, we had a couple that got snowed out, something very common this year. But we, I think, it's one's coming up, is it not? The tech meeting, I think, okay.
There was one just recently that was postponed because Leah was out sick that day, so it had to be...
Yeah, her son was out.
That was the most recent one.
So that's going to be the one that we're missing.
And the one before that was the snow day, as Dr. Bowers mentioned.
So February 5th and April 16th.
I see.
Yep, so they'll be coming.
Thank you.
Okay, any communication from the public at this time?
Sure.
I just want to quickly congratulate Mr. Benante and officially welcome him on behalf of the Haldane administrators. We are looking forward to having you. We will sorely miss Dr. Bowers for all of your service and support. We'll have time to celebrate you. But congratulations and welcome aboard. It's a fabulous place to be.
Any additional communication? Okay, moving on to correspondence. Thank you note from the Foreign Language Department for the immersion experience, which always seems to be a fun opportunity for students. Moving on to consent agenda minutes. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Consent agenda financial. May I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Discussion or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Consent agenda personnel. Am I reading the resolution, or are you reading the resolution?
Well, it's under consent agenda. Do you want me to read the resolutions? I can read them all if you want.
Sure, because it's not popping up for whatever reason right now.
Okay. Yes. Sorry. Okay, item K1 is the approval of the resolution for the appointment of the superintendent of schools. The recommended action is that the Board of Education approves the following resolution, resolved that the Board of Education does hereby appoint Dr. Philip Benante as superintendent of schools for the period of July 1, 2018 through June 30, 2021, under the terms set forth in a May 1, 2018 contract, buy-in between the Haldane Central School District and Dr. Benante, a copy of which shall be incorporated by reference in the minutes of this meeting, and be it further resolved that the Board of Education does hereby authorize the Board of Education President to execute such contract on behalf of the district.
May I have a motion?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Right, second.
Oh, sorry. All those in favor?
Aye.
My iPad just decided to close out on me, so I'm moving on to paper.
So would you like me to read the rest of the resolutions?
Please.
Okay.
Because they're not printed on the paper.
Sure. Item K2 is the acceptance of the resignation of Mr. Joseph Ginjulis, part-time teacher, aide, effective 5/8/18. The recommended action is that the Board of Education accepts the resignation of Mr. Joseph Ginjulis, excuse me, Ginjulis from his position as part-time teacher aide, effective May 8, 2018. Thanks him for his service to the district and wishes him well in his future endeavors.
Great. May I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Item K3 is the appointment of tutor 2018, 2017, 2018, Sarah Graham.
I have...
The recommended action is that the Board of Education appoints Ms. Sarah Graham to the position of tutor for the remainder of the 2017-18 school year at the rate indicated in the BOE-HFA contract, $54.66 per hour. Ms. Graham has met the fingerprinting requirements as mandated by the state.
I have a motion.
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, new business?
Okay. First item is CSE/CPSA recommendations. The recommended action is that the Board of Education approves the recommendations of the Committee on Special Education and Preschool. Special education is indicated below.
May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Thank you, Ms. Amilara. The amendments to the Haldane school calendar, as Dr. Bowers pointed out earlier, we really don't know quite yet what's going to happen, so we will add this on to the next couple of meetings.
Again, it's the school calendar. That just won't get confirmed. We had this last year.
And, but I would also like to, on the agenda, it says the dismissal will be at 11:30 and 10:30. That's not correct. We'll be changing that. That's the 1:55 or the 2:05, so we'll make sure that that's changed.
All right.
For her to change that, so for all days.
All days, okay. Would you like to talk about item number three?
Sure. We, as many of you know, and many of you attended, we had, in the late winter, kind of early spring months, we had a number of safety meetings. And we had concerned citizens and many of our chiefs and police officers and different representatives from different groups that came to them. And one of the things that came out of these meetings was concern and a continued concern, which has been voiced since I've been here, about the traffic patterns and what happens when we drop our kids off and kids come in, and what happens in the morning when they arrive, and what happens when they leave. And as you know, there is just, we have, it's just a massive movement at those times. So there was a request to have a meeting, and we did have a meeting recently with, they were the members of the fire department and the police department, the sheriff's department, the Cold Spring Police Department. And we sat down and we talked about, is there a way that we could have a safer drop-off and departure for the middle school, high school period, and for then the elementary period? And we talked about many different ways of doing so, and we came to a conclusion about one, a potential reflow or change in the flow of traffic, where we actually divide where people are coming in, either the staff and the buses coming into one area, and can we divide that by the parents that are dropping off and have two separate and distinct either arrivals or departures. So Matt, can I bother you to share some of your thinking and what you learned and what we talked about a little bit at the meeting?
Sure. Good evening, everybody. What exactly would you like me to touch upon?
I guess from your perspective, from the police perspective and from that, the opinions that were shared by the other police officers and from the fire department at the meeting. What you see as the problems, what types of things do you think we need to consider in the reconfiguration, and what should we be doing?
Okay. So it's a multi-part question. I'll try to address it as best I can. If I don't address everything correctly, just ask me again, and I'll try to get back to it. But one of the main reasons why we had started looking into possibly changing a different traffic pattern is a safety reason. As it stands right now, early in the mornings, I'm off campus. I'm down at 9D in Craigside, and I'm directing traffic, you know, physically directing traffic in the road, standing on 9D, which is a busy state route. That being said, it was brought up to our attention numerous times by numerous concerned parents, that I am not physically on campus. I'm standing out on the road at one of the most vulnerable times for a school, which is that school arrival. So we have the majority of our children entering the school building without, you know, the SRO or myself being there at that time. Yes, I'm very close. I'm, you know, within a 500-yard distance from the school, but a lot can happen in that distance. So we decided it'd be a much better idea to have me physically in the school at that time period than out on the road and then trying to fight traffic to get up here if, God forbid, there was in fact a problem. Another part of what was brought up is the fact that if there was a problem, I would have to fight my way up here to get to the physical school. If anybody's been around at drop-off time, it's a little bit of a traffic nightmare. Kind of reminds us of New York City. So early in the morning, we have all of the commuters that are coming southbound from Dutchess County, coming into Putnam County on 9D, and we have the commuters that are going northbound from Putnam County into Dutchess County. And then we have our parents dropping off children somewhere in between. So everybody that is trying to come onto campus is physically, you know, blocking the road, stopping 9D at some point, and then everybody that's, then has to drop their kid off and then re-exit campus and come back out onto 9D is, again, stopping the flow of traffic to exit onto that busy route. Because it's not a one-way turn only, and that would be a pretty hard task to do, it was brought up, could we make it a right turn only at that intersection? Because there's following intersections that are close by, we decided that making it a right turn only or petitioning the state to change it to a right turn only really wouldn't work and wouldn't benefit us enough because that would be a traffic jam then after that right turn, with everybody then attempting to turn left right at the softball fields and kind of circumvent the traffic pattern. So we'd have to change the right turn only there to then a left turn only at the next intersection, and somebody would have to be there to enforce those. Otherwise, you know, our motorists would tend to do what's most convenient for them if there's no penalty for it. So that became an issue that we decided wasn't the best option. So another option that we had come up with is what happens if we don't have everybody coming in and coming back out onto the busiest road that surrounds our building? What if we put them out onto 301 and onto Main Street, where we have multiple avenues for cars to go and potentially cars to back up at the most busy times onto two to three separate roads, instead of having the one-lane Craigside Drive coming in and out, and we have a giant line of cars up and around the circle waiting to exit? So that being said, also another concern with that is with those cars that are backed up all the way on Craigside Drive coming around the circle, that creates a potential hazard for any emergency vehicle attempting to get onto campus. If you've been here at the most busy times where there is that backup, there's no way that a fire truck or an ambulance could fit to come up to campus during those times without removing the rest of those cars out of the way. The only way to remove them out of the way potentially would be to empty them back out onto 9D, which kind of brings us full circle into the main part of the problem. So with that, you know, the fire trucks cannot get up, the ambulances cannot get up, and myself, at one point, I did try to get, you know, up through campus. Were able to get up, but it definitely slows us down and takes us much longer time because of everybody at the drop-off. So we decided to do the shift. We would have everybody coming off of 9D onto Craigside would only be school buses and faculty would be allowed in onto campus off of that entrance. That would also alleviate the problem of the complaints that I've been getting from teachers of almost getting run over by parents in the morning as they're late to work and trying to, you know, quick drop off the kid and fly back out onto 9D to go commute. There's a lot of, we do have speed bumps on campus, but there's a lot of cars that are very quick to get to where they're trying to go. And as our teachers are parking on the side in the parking lots and trying to cross, there's a few incidents where they've almost gotten hit by a car that's in a hurry. So that would alleviate that problem as well. So where we would move all those parents would be up to the Cedar Avenue entrance. So everybody would have to come in off of Cedar Ave, basically do a loop around Mabel Merritt, and at the front of Mabel Merritt, we realized that some of our students are crossing from the high school to Mabel Merritt back and forth at that time because high school would be in session. We are going to create a crosswalk at that intersection and clearly have it outlined and visible, along with the flashers and cones and possible placards or signs put up at that location.
So let me just clarify, because I think this is an important point, and I think that there's confusion that the drop-off is going to be out on the main roads or the tertiary roads coming off Cedar. The drop-off is actually in the loop.
The drop-off is in campus, in the loop around Mabel Merritt. So that way...
It's actually around the bus garage, not Mabel Merritt, right?
Correct.
Yeah, if you come and do the circle, yes.
There's a spot that will be basically in front of the bus garage where the drop-off will be, and it allows easy access for our children to take that sidewalk right there to the high school, which is maybe a 50-yard walk at most, or take that sidewalk and go down to the middle school if they have to come down here for band, whatever it may be at that time. They could go one of two avenues, and there are clearly designated sidewalks that they can use to get to either school. So we decided that that would also be a better option to prevent backlog, because in the event of an emergency, if a vehicle, a fire truck, an ambulance does have to get in off of Cedar, the vehicles or the pedestrian and cars that are on Cedar and waiting to drop their kids off aren't going to take up the whole road at that intersection. As you see now, there's spots where the buses come and do drop off in the morning. Those buses will no longer be there taking up that giant length of road, so you can potentially have a car that is parked, you know, that is backlogged on that road and still have enough space to the side of that car for an emergency vehicle to pass by. And I say emergency vehicle, I'm also talking about other parents, can still pass by. We're not going to have a giant traffic jam because one car decided to park where it shouldn't have parked, which is what we tend to have in the traffic circle. If one person parks in the wrong place, there's a giant traffic jam behind it, you know, backing everything else up. Another big concern...
So let me just also share, and what we've been talking about, as the custodial team welcomes the kids in the morning and opens the door, and as they come in, they would be doing the same in the loop. And so we would be keeping the flow of traffic during the drop-off. There would be people that would be then leaving, and then they could go out onto 301 in multiple ways, depending if they're going right or left.
Those multiple ways are Locust Ridge, Cherry, Orchard, Mountain Avenue.
Correct.
Yep.
Correct. There's three to four separate streets at that location where cars can now choose to, if they're going eastbound, instead of westbound, they could take one road as opposed to the other road if one is being backed up. They're not forced onto one single road, one avenue, where everybody can bottleneck and be jammed up. But that is correct. Thank you for touching upon that. We're not going to take away the elementary drop-off. That's a big part that our kids and our parents love, where they can, you know, just pull up and they have door-to-door service, or valet service, the white glove service, as we call it. We're not going to take that away. That is still going to be there, where we are going to have them opening up the doors and welcoming the kids to school in the morning. It's just going to be at a separate location. So it's not at the circle. It would be basically on the other side of the playground where the kids love to walk by anyway. So it's where they would be dismissed is the same place as where they would be picked up on the other side of that playground. Another big consideration for why we are doing this shift is to keep all of those cars from backlogging in front of our buildings as well. A big safety consideration is having cars parked directly in front of the building that we do not know, you know, other cars, outside cars, coming onto campus and parking in front of either building, the middle school, elementary school, or the high school. Having a vehicle directly in front of those buildings is a huge safety risk, and most schools are going away from that and going away from allowing any vehicle to park in a certain area in front of the buildings for safety precautions. There's numerous ones, safety precautions that I won't get into right now, but it is a big safety factor that I have spoken with Chief Burke about with the Cold Spring Police, and he agrees that it is in our best interest not to have vehicles parked at all hours of the day directly in front of our, you know, our main entrance to the building. Because we have gone to a single entrance building in both buildings, that's a big precaution that we're taking seriously, and we want to keep it so that kids can freely come and go into the one single entrance, the main entrance for both buildings, and not have an obstacle in their way.
Can I ask some questions?
Sure.
So I'm wondering if you've considered, I know the ambulance corps is housed on Cedar, right?
Correct.
And I'm assuming with the influx of traffic happening on Cedar now, their entry and exit into their parking lot and garage might be hindered a bit. Have we thought about that at all?
Yes, we have thought about that, and the chief of the Cold Spring Fire Department was with us in the meeting, and he did touch upon that as well. That, as I had stated before, with that new entrance pattern, even if cars are parked, there is still going to be a lane of traffic that will keep moving on Cedar, onto Mountain, and the ability for an ambulance to get by, even with cars parked on the side of the road. So if it comes to an instance where they cannot move cars out of the way on Cedar to go directly down Cedar, you know, onto 301 in an emergency if they want to go that direction, they can always bang, you know, bang that left right onto our campus, take the loop, you know, move the car... you know, move the cars out of the way with their sirens and their horns, and be able to take that extra lane to get out onto 301 faster in that direction. So there's multiple ways that they can, can go if the traffic is backed up. But again, at these times, we're talking about really a 20 to 30 minute window, you know, early in the morning is the only time that there should be any kind of traffic backlog that they may encounter some traffic to, you know, to resist where they're going.
Yeah, right. But of course, I mean, like in ambulance land, I think one or two minutes difference tends to be a problem, right? So that is something to consider. I was wondering, you know how some places they have that like don't block the box X? So if we were going on Cedar, because that happens sometimes on Craig's Side, right, that people be, the traffic could be stopped, you know, for a minute or two, could there be like a don't block the box for the ambulance driveway so we would never be, there wouldn't be cars just stuck in front of them?
Yes, and that is something that I talked to Chief Burke about. We're going to have to talk to the Village of Cold Spring about. We would like to potentially put up signs in that area as well as a painted street or painted on the, on the pavement, things such as you're talking about, a don't block the box and do not stop in this area.
Right.
So that they will have, you know, an exit coming out whenever they need it.
Larry Burke was part of the brain trust that came together, and it was, we had, it was really a very interesting mix of people because we also had interested parents that were there. So, so he's well aware of all the conversations and Cold Spring Fire Department is, and so this is all kind of, as I said, it was a brain trust of people that just said, let's just come up with the best potential solution that we can think of.
Right.
So this is what the, this is what is being recommended.
However, going to bring up a whole nother matter with our neighbors and friends. See, John?
I have actually a question, a quick question.
Sure.
Yes.
So John, you have...
John's actually good for this because he actually is one of those neighbors.
Yes, he is.
Oh, it's a question for him. The question is...
Show me at the mic.
Do we have any sense of how many people avail themselves of our valet service every day? On a normal day?
There is quite a bit.
Like how many cars?
I've been out there on numerous norming, numerous mornings where we are opening car doors for 15 to 20 minutes with our elementary kids. I don't know an exact number, but I do know that they do stack up, and there is quite a bit that come and drop off right at that entrance.
Yeah, okay. So my, my, my opportunity for investigation would be, I totally understand that the, the entrance issue, being able to get emergency vehicles up in. The trade is that 9D is a major road, constructed as a major road with a lot of traffic on it, right?
Correct.
What you're going to do is you're going to replace, you're going to take all that traffic and dump it into a residential neighborhood, which, so we should engage that community so they know what to expect, A. B, there, that serves as a choke point for a lot of kids walking to campus. So while we will have a nice orderly progression, I think it was this year that some kid got hit on Locust. The cars are tight because they're already parked there, all the seniors parked there. It's, it, it would be, I think it would be useful to consider, we're going to have a lot of anxious parents driving maybe quickly to get to work, a lot of pedestrian traffic, and a lot of not made-for, fast throughput routes. So that would be something I'd want to consider.
So one of the things that we haven't said yet is that we are looking to try it, try it out. And we are going to recommend that after Memorial Day for the month of June, that we try the new traffic pattern, see how it works, see if it's, how many, see if we're creating other problems that we don't foresee, and do a trial period. And then, it's not something that we're saying is going to go into effect right after. It is a, it's a pilot of this new traffic flow, and this will be something that will allow the community and the local neighbors to weigh in and see, and then if we have to make changes that, that will create or make a reprieve for things that potentially could happen, we have the time to do that as well.
My concern with having this begin in June is that the high school students will be on a exam schedule.
Not till, as of the 12th. So we'll have a couple of weeks with the high school kids as part of it. It's a, it's a limited period of time while classes are in session.
That is a big point to stress is that it is a trial period. We're not saying this is the end-all, be-all, this is the way it's going to be for the rest of eternity. This is just what we had a meeting of the minds about and what we came up with as potentially our best solution to our, one of our biggest problems on campus. So we do want to...
Community members were invited, or community members were invited, but I'm not sure community members, where we're dumping the traffic into, were invited.
Well, actually, we had people from that area.
Yes.
We had, so, and it was, it was interesting to hear, I mean, their perspective was also included in this.
And one of the community members, sorry to cut you off, that is from that area, actually had recently just moved to our, our housing district from the metropolis of Washington DC.
That's right.
Where we all know that traffic is the biggest issue down there. You're not going anywhere fast. And he had given us his input and his support on this proposal because he had cited that him and his children had walked to school in Washington DC on a daily basis, and they'd seen the chaos that was down there. And he weighed in with his, you know, best thoughts and best practices, best advice that he could give us from what he's seen as a pedestrian in a big city and what they do, do in that city to keep everyone safe.
I think that's a really good point. Everything's relative to your experience, and I think you're going to end up with a lot of people who have an experience of a relatively tranquil residential neighborhood that is changing. So if it is indeed a trial, which is fantastic, let's try new things and see if it works, I would suggest being very clear in the communication to the people of the neighborhood. This is a trial, this is why we're doing it, this is what we're assessing, and this, at the end of this, this is how we're going to make a determination whether it's a good strategy or not.
Absolutely.
So people understand what's going on.
Yeah, and we have to ask them to weigh in.
Absolutely, absolutely.
And so that's going to be something that we're looking for.
So we figured that this was kind of the perfect opportunity where we do only have, you know, a month, month and a half left of school, where we can roll this out as a trial and then decide what really is our best practice moving forward for the next school year. So again, it's not something that's going to be permanent. It is something that we do want input on from the community, the school, you know, staff, as well as the children, and find out really what's best for everyone. It is a situation where obviously everyone has different opinions and, you know, nobody is going to, not, not one solution is going to make everybody happy, but we want to do what's going to make, make the most people happy, but also keep the most amount of people and most amount of children safe at that time.
And Steve Smith was a real proponent of this because we've had two situations, one in the morning and one in the afternoon at arrival and dismissal, where we needed to get the fire trucks into the campus, and it was a real problem.
And I asked...
I was there, I'm sorry. I was having heart palpitations. I was, I saw it all happening. It was at elementary school dismissal. There's all these parents parked in the cul-de-sac, which they're not supposed to be, and the fire trucks are trying to get up the hill. It was so stunning. I was like, this is exactly the problem.
I was there as well, and I wondered why they didn't come through Cedar Street. It was at the high school. Why are you coming up Craig's Side? So that was my picture.
I think one of their biggest issues, and I don't want to speak for them, but they're coming up through Craig's Side to get to that front of the high school, and with the buses parked, you know, along the whole bus depot, trying to make that roundabout with the buses there, with the children exiting, you know, school at that time, cars coming in and out. I think that turn and then they turn onto the cut-through there and then off onto the circle potentially, I think it's a very hard turn for that fire truck to navigate. I haven't driven one, but I assume that those giant trucks, it's not easy to turn on a dime.
So is our recommended, our recommendation that we do try and try it, see how it works, if there are problems with it. We're going to be measuring something that we are actually seeing and we understand what the issues are. And then if it's the right move, we'll make it, and if it's the wrong move, we won't make it. And then we'll have to go back to the drawing board.
John, can I ask you one question? Because you live back there. You said the seniors are still parking back there. Is that really true?
Oh, yeah, there's juniors and seniors.
Yeah, a lot of people park on the surrounding grounds, Mountain Avenue, Locust Ridge.
Right, but, but the seniors, are they parking there all day? Because we opened up that parking lot for them.
It's such a shit every...
But I thought it was only like five or six that may is...
It's, it's primarily juniors who park on Mountain Avenue and Cedar, but like the, the seniors who have licenses and cars, who don't have parking lot spots, also park on the Cedar or Mountain Avenue area because there's really nowhere else to park in town where you could get to school efficiently.
So this is still an issue? Like we tried to correct it, but it is still an issue?
Well, it got, it gets better.
Parking is definitely an issue. It's not, you know, a gigantic issue, but we do only have 25 spots for our seniors. There are more seniors with cars than 25, and then you add in the juniors that all are getting their cars and starting to drive. We do have a lot of students that do have the access to vehicles that have nowhere to park them. So by default, they are going onto the side streets and parking over there.
But the problem, that one of the reasons we addressed it was because they were parking in front of people's driveways, which, not just kids, parents were doing it too, which is completely unsafe and illegal, and that was...
And we haven't heard complaints.
And that I think has gotten better.
It's better.
They're being, they're much more respectful of, I think, the streets, to my knowledge.
I just wanted to check. It was just the way you kind of threw it in there. I was like, oh, did it come back up as an issue?
It just makes roads really narrow. It's a one-way road.
Right, okay.
And when you have ambulances coming down and buses coming down, it's a one-way road with not a lot of visibility.
Right, okay.
And to that effect, I also know Chief Burke had told me in the past, I had dealt with a traffic or a parking issue over there, and he has directed his guys, especially his traffic detail, to check those roads early in the morning and the afternoon to make sure that there's not any parking issues. So they have, and they routinely do, drive through those areas and make sure that the vehicles are where they're supposed to be. I have received a couple of calls from them. If there is a student that they know is a student and they're parked where they shouldn't be, they let me know and we kind of just have them move their vehicles. But if it is somebody that we don't know, it's the potential that they might have to move it for them.
Right. So I think that the village, if we needed to, we could also look at if it's just parking on one side of the road. I think that that's a possibility where we, we haven't done that. There's, there's things that we can do, and now that we have everybody involved in the decision-making process, that's something we can ask for if we need to.
Well, we have that parking lot down by the softball field. I mean, nobody wants to walk up the hill, but that is our parking lot.
And it is, and maybe we need to do something where we give students permits to park down there if they're juniors. I mean, maybe we, we make it a required parking lot.
And then we're going to run into the issue of crossing 9D again.
That's right.
And the safety and...
But we do have a...
We aren't getting rid of the crossing guard at 9D.
Yeah, the crossing guard will still be there.
Tom will always be down there at 9D to cross the, the students and make sure that they cross safely. There are quite a few students that do walk up already from those houses that are below the softball field and come up every day and cross at that intersection with the crossing guard.
That's fine when Tom's there, but Tom's not there all day unfortunately.
The kids are coming and going all day.
They have senior privilege, they have...
Well, they're there at lunchtime.
They're there at lunchtime.
Not senior privy.
No, no, not, not.
And that's all various hours.
Yeah, that's just whenever you have a free period, yeah.
Well, we're hoping, you know, by the time, by the time they're seniors, we're really hoping that we've trained them or helped them to learn how to cross the road.
I'm an adult and I'm afraid to cross 9D. There's no crossing guard, so, anyway.
Is there any other questions?
No, I think Dr. Ben, you said you were going to contact all of the, the neighbors, right? Because they're not all school people, so they're not going to be privy to this, so some sort of like every single house delivery...
Well, we're going to have a letter that's going to go out to the neighbors.
Yeah.
And then we will have a letter that will go out as kind of the first round of letters to the community after we've given one to the neighbors, and then we're going to send a third letter to the community so they remember what's coming the Tuesday after Memorial Day.
Yeah, and will there be people stationed down at 9D to turn people around?
Not necessarily down at 9D, but we will have staff that is stationed in strategic points.
But you'll be there. You'll be down by the parking lot.
Correct.
We're going to actually put a blinking light that says that there's no traffic, that it's staff and buses only during the time that the blinkers are on, which would be the morning drop-off and the afternoon. So we are, we're looking, we're ordering that, and you were going to be right where the parking lot?
I was going to be right at the cafeteria where we do have the parking lot that kind of juts out, and we could turn parents around who forgot that they can't pull in that day.
Yeah.
It'll be a little bit of a, a training period where we'll have to, you know, get everyone into a new routine when they've done this other routine for the, you know, for the entire school year leading up.
Yeah. And it's going to be, and I'll do an all-call. I'll, I'll do a robo-call to all the parents the night, that Monday night, reminding them that the traffic pattern, and it is going to change for the month of June for the remainder of the time.
And we, we did talk about it, and we do have faith, you know, in our parents and the students, because we've changed a couple of things with the traffic pattern already this year. And after the first couple of days, we really haven't had any issues since then. So even though it's been something that's ingrained in them that they must drop off at this point or must pull in at this point, they're very good about change and allowing us to do what we need to do to keep the kids safe.
Well, I think it'll be interesting to see how it goes. I applaud everybody's efforts. Clearly you guys have put all your, you know, gotten everybody together in a coalition of thoughts and ideas and figured out a best plan, and that's all we can do, right? We do a pilot program and we see how it goes.
And it's been, it's been long enough that the community members or police saying, we've been talking about this for years, it's time. We just need to do something, so.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Matt.
Last item is the dates for the annual Board of Ed reorg meeting, the date for the August business meeting, and the date for the board retreat. I'd like to make a recommendation to table these. So when we have our new superintendent as well as new board members on board, we can figure out solid dates. So, will table?
Table, good.
Any communication, additional communication from the public at this time? Okay, then I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.